Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the April 25th Falls Township Planning Commission Agenda. Please stand for the flag.
...............................................................
Mr. Benny, call the board, please.
Mr. Hartzell?
Here.
Present. Mr. Coyne?
Present.
Mr. Everett?
Present.
Ms. Luszczyk?
Present.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Benny's present. Mr. Haney?
Present.
All right, we have everybody's here.
All right, item number one, Keystone Trade Center, Ethos Parcel, 150 Solar Drive, Fairliss Hills, PA, TMP number thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero two four. Minor subdivision to create separate lot containing existing office building.
Yep, okay. Hi, good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. This property is located in the NPM District. The tax parcel number is thirteen fifty-one one twenty-four, and it's currently comprised of eighteen point zero two acres. The Planning Commission may remember there was previously a subdivision of this parcel. This is a different application. What is before you for consideration this evening is a subdivision that would carve off approximately three point zero six acres in the area depicted on the site plan before you this evening. You may note that the carve-off is a little abnormal or irregular in terms of the lot construction, so even though it's three point oh six acres, it's a bit oblong, and the primary reason for that was from a zoning standpoint to get as close to the five-acre minimum as was possible. We went to the zoning hearing board in March and procured two variances, one for the minimum acreage on-site, again, there was a five-acre minimum, and one for the tract area. The subdivision, if it's approved, would leave approximately fourteen point nine six acres of the balance of the site. So essentially, if you look at the site plan, what we're doing is we're subdividing to create the new lot, and we're subdividing this to make use of the existing office building. You can see on the bottom-left corner of the site plan before you this evening for North Point's purposes to utilize this as an office. Presently, in the KTC, North Point is currently utilizing a modular building, so the plan would be to scrap that operation and utilize this as their office on-site. There would be approximately five permanent employees. There are eighteen parking spaces that would be located on the three point oh six acre subdivided parcel. There is a, there will be a shared access agreement that would be executed between North Point and Ethos that would be in place between the property owners, and of course, the township solicitor can review and bless that before it's recorded. There is no site work proposed with the application. We do have one waiver, which is one ninety-one thirty-seven B regarding the location of the parking facilities vis-à-vis the lot line. Everything else in the review letter from Joe's office is a "will comply." The only other note I would make proactively at the outset is with respect to the lighting, again, we're not proposing any site work, so we're not looking to modify any of the existing conditions on-site. We think the lighting is adequate as it's currently situated. That's essentially the substance of the minor subdivision. Jeremy, if you want to just take thirty seconds and explain why you're doing it, then we can open it up for any questions the Planning Commission would have. Thank you.
Mike addressed everything pretty accurately. Like I said, trying to relocate our office building. We initially moved into the old US Steel Rose City office at one bit Fairliss Drive. That building's since been demolished. Sorry, thanks, Mike. It's currently underneath Building Five. Appreciate that. So we had demolished the previous office building, moved to a modular office at the front entrance of the park, looking for a more permanent, you know, facilities management, kind of a headquarters to run our business out of, and so worked out a deal with Ethos to acquire the office building at the front of their park. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
So my concern is because of the irregular shape you've created, like a six-hundred-foot-long piece of property that has a twenty-foot-wide building envelope, and if you're going to use this as your base of operation for maintenance or whatever have you around the park, I'm assuming it's going to come with more buildings and more structures, and everything you do is going to require multiple variances and multiple waivers.
So... Could you ask a question again, Mr. Benny? I'm not struggling.
I think I want to speak first.
For Mr. Benny, I think he's concerned that the point of the acquisition is going to be to eventually develop portions of the balance of the site, and the development of the remainder of the three acres because of the way the lot's constituted would require significant zoning relief and/or waivers for that development.
Sure. To address that specifically, there are no current plans, and you can kind of see the way that the site's constrained, obviously with Ethos' remaining parcel, but also the road, and then there's an industrial waste pump station at the front of the parcel. Unlikely that there would be any kind of reconfiguring of that remainder, but I understand your point. That's, I guess, something we'll have to be mindful of moving forward.
I mean, whatever we decide to do, if this happens and gets approved, it's the way it is forever. Whether you guys stay there, you don't stay there, somebody else moves in, then we've created a lot that is really non-conforming for many, many purposes.
But it's...
It's irregular shaped, and really, I don't think from a planning standpoint, creating a lot like this is a good practice.
Can I talk to Jeremy for half a second about this?
I just, there's one other, I guess, consideration to point out, kind of how the lot ended up in the geometry it is. Mike had touched on earlier, and obviously, when we were in front of the zoning hearing board, we wanted to try to get as close to a compliant lot as possible, and so, you know, increasing the size of that with what Ethos was willing to get rid of. That being said, also, through due diligence, we had discovered that the frontage along Solar Drive, it actually ended up being kind of a donut hole in the Act Two release of liability, and I forget whether that's Lot G or H, but US Steel had previously filed, like, a notice of intent to remediate, submitted their final remediation plan, and received release of liability on the balance of the, or I said, Roble and Ethos parcel, and then to the parcel directly north of that, and so they ended up with this two-and-a-half-acre strip with the radius at the east side that wasn't part of the release of liability. And so, when we had highlighted this to Ethos, like, that became kind of an easy swap, so to speak, in terms of, like, the additional acreage to get closer to the compliant lot, as well as relieving them of that, and we'll end up taking on the liability to achieve Act Two release of liability for the balance of the parcel. So it's another, just kind of oddity of, like, why the lot's shaped as it is, and I think it, you know, I understand it's not, you know, super conforming, but, you know, we feel it's important to take it through Act Two as well as, you know, I don't know if there's any other restrictions or conditions we'd like to address with the use of the property in the future, but currently, we don't have any intended use for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, and I understand the concern, I think the concern would be added if the lot wasn't improved, right? So if the situation was you had a fifteen-acre strip here, and you're creating an oblong piece with a speculative use at the end of the day that was going to require significant zoning relief and/or waivers for it to be developed, I certainly would understand that. On North Point's end, you know, there's an existing structure. It has parking improvements associated with it. They're looking to occupy the existing structure on-site in the manner that was described. Knowing North Point's operations, some of the existing site constraints, the balance of that, I don't want to say is totally unbuildable, but seems like it's unbuildable. I just don't think it's a realistic concern for this property because of the existing conditions and the intended use. If it was vacant, and the question was, well, are we creating a lot that's not buildable, I would agree, but it's not. It's improved. The use is clear, and the balance, I think, in this case, of the likelihood that the site is going to be developed again in a meaningful way or further developed is very, very low.
How long are you planning to occupy the area?
Hopefully, this is a permanent home. So currently, we have five full-time, one-site North Point employees that run the park, so, you know, property management, operations, facilities. So those guys are all currently located in the temporary office trailers we have set up at the park. The idea is to move them into this building, and, you know, we tend to be here indefinitely, so this would be kind of their permanent home base.
Or there'll be any mechanical, like, shed or anything like that occupying this area once you occupy the building?
In addition to what's there?
Correct.
No, that's, it's not the intended. So some of the mechanical systems are still being evaluated. It looks like, you know, a lot of it, the electrical, the plumbing is all in pretty good shape. We may be replacing the rooftop units, but in large part, yeah, it's just kind of refresh the finishes and move right in.
Okay.
So previously, AE PolySilicon, before Ethos, Roble acquired the site, they had renovated that office, so did all the environmental remediation, took down, you know, the asbestos and everything, and then they had actually fitted out the entire building. So if you go in there, you know, there's still office furniture and everything, so it's kind of a ready-made office space.
My question's more towards, are you going to put garages there, anything like that, with a truck for response or anything like that, and your maintenance workers?
No.
Any other questions from the board?
No, my answers, my questions are answered.
Is there any public comment? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make... I'll make a motion to, I'll recommend approval for the minor subdivision application of 150 Solar Drive, TMP number thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero two four, Zone NPM. Were there any waivers? Everything was "will comply," correct?
There was one waiver.
There's...
There's one waiver.
From one ninety-one thirty-seven B.
Okay, with the, let's see, so I'll recommend approval based upon the Jones Engineering Letter, April eighteen twenty twenty-three, dated twenty twenty-three, and with one waiver of one ninety-one dash thirty-seven B.
I'll second. Mr. Benny, poll the board, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Ms. Luszczyk?
Yes.
I'm a no. Mr. Henderson? Mr. Haney, sorry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll bring up item number two, Trench Tech, one, nineteen seventy-nine Bristol Pike, Morrisville, PA, TMP number thirteen dash zero four zero dash zero four six, preliminary land development, building addition, storm sewer, and parking striping.
Is there any way that I can be pushed back a little bit? I'm still waiting for the engineer and stuff on the turn.
Sure, no problem.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move to item number three, Zen Auto Transport, Six Steel Road East, Morrisville, PA, TMP number thirteen zero four seven dash one four seven, preliminary land development, construction of a nine thousand three hundred and fifty-square-foot garage building with associated parking and loading areas. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Albert Lycon. I'm the owner of Six Steel Road LLC, and I currently have a, this land development is, I currently have a tenant on there with a second tenant that has truck storage, and would like to have a building for doing service and repairs. So that's what we're here for. I have my engineer, Jason Smeealan, from Atlantic Valley Consultants, that will address the concerns that we have and the plan that we have are presenting to you.
I'm Jason Smeealan, Atlantic Valley Engineering. This is properties located in the HI zoning district, pretty industrial area off of Steel Road there. Existing on the site right now is a building. It's the lighter color building that's shown on the plan. Also, the darker gray accessways and parking areas are there, and then the big light gray area in the back is currently a compacted stone parking lot. That's all being used for the truck business currently. So what we're proposing is the new eight parking space, nine parking spaces in front of the darker color building there. It's a little over nine thousand square feet. In addition to that, we're providing stormwater management facilities, the basins. It's really kind of flat out in that area, so we have these two basin areas connected with pipes. We have the review letters from the township engineer, township traffic consultant. I'm happy to say that nearly all of the items there will comply, except with a couple of waivers that we wanted to run through with you and get your thoughts and opinions on. So what I handed out to you was a colorized version of our plan, and also a revised waiver request letter, and I just, I think, pretty much everything's "will comply," and it just kind of comes down to waivers. So our first waiver is, we're requesting a waiver from providing curbing across all of the parking area. I mean, it would be required on all of the parking area. We're proposing to have curbing along the front of the new building, and this will allow the parking lot to be able to sheet flow into the detention basins, just let it get in there without curbing. Otherwise, we would have additional stormwater management facilities, and it just seems for such a small area to make a lot of sense, but it'll look nice around the building. So that is our first waiver request. Second waiver request is from providing sidewalk along the site frontage. This isn't really pedestrian-friendly area, no sidewalks out there, so we're requesting that waiver also. We're requesting an alternate paving specification for the parking lot area. It's all privately owned. It's a tech that Mr. Lycon has, uses at his other facility that's adequate for trucks, so that's a waiver request there also. And then lastly, a waiver request from replacement of trees. So at the site, there's about seven fairly large evergreen trees that act as a buffer, and they're going to have to come down, but, you know, quite frankly, they're close to the end of their usefulness anyway, but in replacing, they're going to be replaced with a row of arborvitae's, so there'll be about seven trees coming down, probably at least twenty arborvitae's going in. And in addition to that, there was a comment about some shade parking trees. We're going to have three additional trees located towards the front of the site to help shade the parking area, the new parking area that's going to be added. Apart from that, everything else is, will comply, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I was able to talk to township engineer today, and we were discussing some of the waiver issues. I think I was a little conservative in my waiver request letter initially, and a lot of those things did not apply to this particular development because of the way that we were doing our stormwater management. I also was able to talk to the fire marshal. We believe we can comply with his comments, and we actually already addressed the traffic consultant's comments, so...
Mr. Wade, is the waiver for the trees really necessary? I mean, they're taking down seven trees and they're putting twenty, doesn't that kind of, it sounds like it should be close to me.
Yeah, I think the discussions we had today, you know, that information about what's going back in, you know, is, it sounds adequate, for sure.
So then this waiver doesn't really need to be a waiver because you're complying?
Yeah.
Is what it comes down to?
Yeah, that's, I, yeah, we're putting in way more trees than we're taking down.
Yeah, so, okay.
The, maybe you tell me, is this just a repair shop, or is this, like, people come in dropping trailers and picking up trailers? I noticed in the narrative for the traffic report, you said there were seven trips a day, and for, you know, three thousand, three-acre yard, I'm just curious.
So most of the yard right now currently, well, all the yard currently, is just a stopoff? These are guys mostly coast-to-coast drivers, so, or long-distance, so they're basically dropping their trucks and trailers there, and then they reload it, and they go to wherever they're heading to. They want to have an area, because I have no repairs right now currently. They can't do any repairs on-site whatsoever, so they want to be able to build a repair shop there that they could actually bring their trucks and their trailers in and do repairs. So, yeah, I, I can't anticipate, but that's, you know, that's basically what I asked them.
So this is just one carrier?
Yeah.
It's not multiple carriers?
It's not public?
It's, pardon me?
It's not public, per se. People, any tractor-trailer driver that comes in there can't show up and get their truck repaired. It's going to be basically for the carriers?
In the future, I just want to write that down. The carriers that are currently in there, it's, it's one company that has it, but it's multiple carriers. In the trucking industry, everyone has owner-operators that they're working with and a bunch of individual groups, so it's not one brand carrier that's in there. So the same thing with the service, I imagine it would be multiple, multiple people coming in there?
Yeah.
That are getting their trucks, not all one name brand.
I guess the question is, as long as they're associated with that lot, that's where they're going to be dropping their, in and out. They're not going to be soliciting to local, everyone and anyone publicly to say, hey, come get your truck fixed here. It's a, is it, I guess my question is, it's going to be more towards the people that are staging their trucks there, coming in and out, loading up and loading, or are they actually going to get people from the local area to come repair their dump trucks that might not be associated with that lot? That's kind of my question. I think Brian's still...
So far, all the conversations have been that it's associated with those trucks. If you need that addressed, I don't have, I can't, I can't honestly tell you...
No, understood, but I think the traffic study might be a little bit different if it's going to be non-stop trucks coming in from the area versus just the ones that are there for their purpose.
I'm not concerned about this place looking ugly because I've seen your places, and they're immaculate, so I'm not concerned of that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, even to the point, I mean, I'm over there, and, you know, if there's trash on the ground, I make them pick it up.
Yeah, I'm not concerned.
And I mean, I know Clean Earth next door, that's a parade of trucks all day long, in and out.
Yes.
And everybody else in that park is the same thing.
Yes.
Including my other, including my other business. But, yeah, I can't, I can't tell you they won't have any outside trucks, but I mean, it's not, they're not opening up a truck repair shop. They're opening up to repair their own trucks, but will they do repairs for other trucks or operators that they know that is possible?
Gotcha.
My question was more towards, you know, if there needed to be, if it was a day drivers, they came, picked up a truck, parked their car, left, came back, left the truck, then there may need to be some more parking and requirements.
Yeah, for the most part, that, they're not, they're not changing that model as far as that goes. Their, their model as far as the trucking is going to stay the same. I mean, there's very little impact right now, because I'm there a lot, and, you know, there's very little impact. I mean, most of the time, I don't even see anybody.
That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm good.
Any public comment? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant preliminary and final land development for Six East Steel Road, tax parcel thirteen forty-seven one forty-seven, Zone Heavy Industrial, with "will comply" to Jones Engineering's letter, Remington Vernick Engineers' letter, Fire Marshal, and with the waivers for one ninety-one thirty-seven B, one ninety-one sixty-one A, and one ninety-one attachment one.
I'll second it.
Mr. Benny, poll the board, please. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Luszczyk?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too.
God bless.
All right, we'll go back to item number two, Trench Tech, one nine seven nine Bristol Pike, Morrisville, PA, TMP number thirteen dash zero four zero dash zero four six, preliminary land development, building addition, storm sewer, and parking striping.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Anthony Hiblin, professional practicing engineer, representing the applicant, Trench Tech Technology. And with me here is the comptroller, Britt...
Sorex.
Sorex. Jay Kerrigan couldn't be here tonight due to a funeral, and he asked us to represent him here tonight. Before you is an application to provide seven thousand square-foot additional space to help in the repair and turnaround of Trench Tech Solutions to the construction industry. So as, you may not be familiar with Jay's business, but they have basically trench technology to hold the construction trench earth from endangering the workers within the trench and the utility installation within the trench. So the equipment goes out to the job site, and from time to time comes back here to the facility for repairs, fabrication, for turnaround to different job sites in that regard. The site has a building on it right now. It is located in the LI District. I'll give you a brief outline of the site. It's a gross thirteen point two acres, located at nineteen seventy-nine Bristol Road in Morrisville, PA. There is public water that serves the site and a onsite private sanitary septic field. There is public water that serves the site and a onsite private sanitary septic field on the site. As part of the 7,000 square foot addition, there will be no water service, no restroom service, no kitchen, no kitchenette, no sanitary sewer, and we would expect to be status of an exception from any DEP planning module. With regard to the natural resources on their site, there's some substantial steep slope and woodlands, a little bit of floodplain and wetlands down on the southern edge of the site, which also borders a railroad. That area is mapped out and is not near any of the application here tonight. The entire 7,000 square foot would be built in the existing construction laydown yard. I'm going to turn this page. This page is sheet one of the application rendered in color. The dark area is the 7,000 square foot building, the light is the existing building, and the green area are those natural resources that appear in the site capacity calculations. Again, as I said, there's no disturbance to any of those areas. Another map I brought with me today is simply an aerial photograph plan. The aerial image is taken every couple of years from the Pennsylvania data access past this site, if you will. They shoot this and correct it photogrammetrically to a scale. This scale is shown at 100 scale. The property limits are mapped out in yellow. As you can see, the photograph is shot when there are no leaves on the trees. You can see the natural resource protection area along with the yard. I'd also like to point out on this photograph, Bristol Road. It is sometimes confusing because it is parallel to old Bristol Pike. Bristol Road, as you may know, this portion of it does not serve any primary access to anybody, but it is there. It's an existing right-of-way with an existing roadbed. Everyone's primary access, three of us here, are off an access road and off old Bristol Pike. So we, we did bring with us a list of a waiver request that involves improvements to Bristol Road, which, as I say, no one's really using for their primary access. I'll go through the waivers later. The zoning setbacks for the site and parking requirements for the site will all be complied with, and as we go through the township's review, I'll point out some items specifically. With regard to the lot area, as I said, this is in a rather large site. It's 13.2 gross acres, 12.47 net acres, whereas a half acre is the minimum required in the light industrial zoning district. The lot depth is 150 feet. There is a 718-foot depth on the existing site. The front yard setback is a 100-foot setback with an existing non-conformity of 70 feet. We will put this building no closer to that 70 feet than exists today. In fact, we're going to step it back as far as we can and still connect it to an existing side door to the building. The side yard setback is 20 feet, 48.4 is provided. That doesn't change by this application. The structure will be, the addition will be on the opposite side of that side yard. The rear yard setback is a 20-foot minimum, 288.7 feet exist in the rear yard.
You can, you can just let us know the waivers you want, and we'll go from there. So we're not talking forever.
Okay. So basically, everything is compliant with regard to existing zoning, except for the front yard, which is a non-conforming situation. After going through the review letters, I looked through the ones, we would comply with all of the review letters, and we can go into some detail, but there are some waivers, and I'll go through those right.
Yeah, just go to the ones you would like a waiver for.
Sure. With regard to the provision of widening the existing street, we feel that the access road is sufficient for our needs, and we would, would ask for a waiver from anything dealing with the widening of Bristol Road, as it's not really a thoroughfare that the public is using right now, as well as neither are any of the adjacent owners. They do use it for a backup or a rear drive to set some of the materials in the back of the yard there.
How wide is the existing cartway?
Right now, it's 18-foot, and then the right-of-way is 60-foot. 191-37G is the ordinance regarding the area plantings for parking facilities. This is a business-to-business operation that public doesn't arrive at the site here. There is sufficient parking with planting trees around it at the existing office front door. The employees park in the yard. We're going to specify where they're going to park in the yard, rather than just anywhere with this application, but we were seeking a waiver from planting trees in the middle, midst of the construction yard. Section 191-37H records the paved surface of the lot. As I said, the parking lot at the office is concrete and is painted and striped and ADA accessible. That would remain to serve the property. Again, the addition, we would provide parking in the yard, but we asked for a waiver from paving. It's a hard surface with millings and aggregate stone to serve the parking facilities. With regard to the lighting of that parking lot, again, we ask that waiver as well, as we're, we're lit at the front of the building where the parking exists today. 191-39 regards sidewalks along Bristol Road, and we would ask, as that roadway wouldn't serve to have any sidewalk, to waive that sidewalk. And 191-48 is with regard to street trees along Bristol Road, and we would again ask for that waiver. So to sum, sum it up, the waivers we're requesting do fall mostly within regards to the Bristol Road street frontage, and then the others fall within the parking lot, which we do have an operating paved lit parking lot now, and wish that the 11 more parking spaces not have to be paved or lit. Jay has a certain number of employees that are parking in the front now, and although the code does require additional parking, there's no new employees being hired to use more parking, but we will have it striped and next to the addition, so that it's at least there for convenience if anyone doesn't want to park in the front.
So how many parking spaces are required, and how many are you providing?
Sure. The parking breaks down by number of personnel. 1.25 spaces for each employee, plus two spaces for each manager of personnel, and another additional parking space for each business-related vehicle which is located on the premise. All in all, 17 employees on the major shift times 1.25, plus the manager and three corporate vehicles. We are required to have 27 spaces, and 27 spaces are provided on the site.
Okay. That, Connor Dix, what, I think you just said that you were gonna, you didn't have enough parking spaces, so, so you do have enough parking spaces?
We do have enough parking spaces by code. We don't see adding personnel to get to that use with what's going on there now. And I did want to bring up with regard to the traffic engineer's review, if we do need a study, he's looking to provide a count from the ITE manual. I think we have something better than that. Jay and Britt witnessed over the last 13 years of operation, their number of cars are 15 in the morning and 13 in the evening, peak hours. I was going to discuss that with the traffic engineer and see if he has that ITE manual, where they might peg this project. As you know, the ITE manual is an average number based on nationwide counts of similar-sized and similar-use buildings. So we wanted to just check in with him and see how Jay's counts match up with the ITE manual.
The, all the, are all the boxes that are stored in the yard, or they all belong to Trench Tech, or are they rental spaces to other contractors?
It's all Trench Tech.
And all the trucks that are parked on the road out there, are they Trench Tech's too?
Everything is Trench Tech's. All assets.
So this addition, why are you putting this addition on? I'm, I'm sorry.
My, go ahead, you mind?
Oh, good. It's basically to facilitate more space for repairs and maintenance and fabrication when necessary.
They have had some off-site companies doing it that just kind of fell to the wayside during the pandemic, and they need to take that on themselves now.
So you'll design basically to whatever the application is, and that's what you're going to take in-house now and do in-house versus subcontracting out?
Correct.
Okay.
But if you're adding, you know, work, how come you're not adding any employees?
No, our, the welders on site can handle doing that.
Oh, so you already are, you're fabricating already, you just?
Yeah, we just need more space for the most part.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any, the only one comment I have is that you indicated that the wetlands were delineated, but the note on the plan says they were delineated in 1998.
Oh, let me clarify that. The applicant, I think it was the prior owner, came for the second expansion. So in '98, the original building was built, and 2002...
Approximately five years ago. Yeah, I think it was like five years ago we put on the second addition, or the addition to the original.
And at that time, it was before the addition, at the time Jay purchased the property, he had a wetland specialist double-check the 1998 line, and that line was consistent. They mapped out the slight difference along that railroad track here and submitted that to the township.
But it's not reflected on these plans?
We were, we were going to work with the engineer to make sure it is reflected on this plan. It's a more recent delineation. But again, it was not even close to being in the yard. It was down low at the bottom of the bank, where the original line was delineated.
But it impacts the buffers and the margins?
Not to any extent that, but yes, that number on the chart will change slightly. But again, we're well away from it, and there's no intent to even be close, let alone in it.
Any other questions for the board? Any public comment? All right, then I'll take, make a motion. Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve preliminary land development for Trench Tech Shoring Solutions Incorporated, 17, or 1979 Bristol Pike, tax that parcel 13-040-046, zoned LI. And we'll comply with the Bucks County Planning Commission letter, the Fire Marshal's letter, Remington Vernick, and asking for waivers from 191-31D2, 191-37G, 191-38, 37H, 191-38, 191-39, and 191-48.
Colin, did you say 191-37B?
No.
I don't see that on here.
Oh, sorry. Additional 191-37B.
Didn't we also specify that 191-37H is not necessary since they have the correct parking spaces?
That's, that has to do with the material of the parking spaces, not the amount.
I'll second that.
Mr. Vinnie, pull the board, please. Ms. Lushchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Heaney?
Yes. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to item number four. LPC Morrisville, 2300 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Morrisville, PA, CMP number 13-047-097, final land development, construction of a 973,000 square foot warehouse space.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rob Gunlock, attorney for the applicant. Here with me is Eric Moser. Eric is here on behalf of the applicant, LPC Morrisville LP, and Victor Grande on behalf of the engineering with the project. Victor is the civil engineer on the project. By way of brief background, we've been before you on a number of times concerning the project. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how much overview you want us to, to review with you. Certainly, this is the old Solvay site, and there are remnants and some, some former buildings there that are being demolished and removed from the property, and the property is being redeveloped for a first-class warehouse and distribution facility. We have worked over the last two years with the township consultants on the design and the redesign, particularly as to the stormwater facilities on the site. We are, property here is, now has no facilities on it, and stormwater runs uncontrolled. We're collecting stormwater from not only all the improvements proposed on the subject property, but also the surrounding properties who will be draining into the swale stormwater system of the subject property and properly conveying that stormwater off-site. We have received review letters from the township engineer with no open comments, all of which would arguably be a will comply. There's review letters from the authority with no open comments. There's a review letter from the township traffic engineer with no open There's a review letter from the township traffic engineer with no open comments acknowledging all items have been addressed. The only open traffic item is Morrisville Borough did request signage, off-site signage in the borough, directing vehicles and truck traffic around the Borough Main Street. And we have been pursuing to obtain that permit from PennDOT. We have obtained the PennDOT permit for the project, but we're still working for Morrisville Borough to obtain the signage permits. We had a call with PennDOT last week and those applications are still working through with PennDOT and the Turnpike Authority for approval. But the applicant has committed to seeing that through and installing that signage in Morrisville Borough. Certainly, all the truck traffic that comes off the site will be directed to the left to avoid going down Main Street. But any trucks that find their way off of, not off of Tyburn, but the improper exit through the borough will be directed around the borough to the subject property. So we didn't have any open issues in the, or open items in the review letter, but certainly we're here to discuss any questions you have or address any comments you have with the project.
So is there any waivers you're looking for now?
No.
Okay. If you don't mind, we have some new board members since the last time. Would you mind just giving a review of what the project's gonna be?
Sure. Yep.
The attention is?
I know you've been here. Who is the new?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, good. I'm sorry. Why don't I have Victor give a quick overview and orient you as to the location of the property, what's out there today, and what we're proposing here and how we're, how we've designed it on the property. Victor, do you wanna, do you wanna grab that mic and just walk through this?
Sure. Would we be able to? No, it's not.
I was looking at it twice there.
Do we have anything on the screen that we could look at?
Possibly. In the plans.
I just gotta go over the overview of the warehouse and what's there.
Yeah, we can, um...
I can do it.
I'm sure they read all sixty, one-hundred-and-sixty-three in the plan.
Okay, yes. By all means, I'll, I'll do the brief introduction.
Let's start, Victor, at the, the location of this property on Pennsylvania Avenue off of Tyburn. Why don't we talk about where it is and what's out there today and then what we're proposing?
Sure, sure. So the site is bound by the Delaware River to the north on the plan and then the South Pennsylvania Avenue to the south of the plan. To the left of it is the industrial facility and also East Post Road. And then to the right of the facility, or the south of the facility, is Biles Creek. So in today's condition, there is an old industrial facility. That industrial facility has been long since removed. Any and all items for that facility for what they used to do there has been cleaned up with an environmental act. Everything has been taken care of years ago. So what we're gonna be proposing here, or, excuse me, let me continue with the existing conditions. So to the south of this, between the project location and Biles Creek, there's a large area of environmental area with regards to species, specifically the cricket frog. So that area is all being established and, or, excuse me, untouched and is going to remain in the situation that it is now, preserving that, that area for that. We've also actually worked with the Fish and Boat Commission to actually enhance that area and, and also allow the area to, allow the area to become more of a natural habitat. So in part of what we are doing is we are relocating a, some wetlands on our site. And in doing so, we have a two-to-one ratio, so we're actually providing twice as much wetlands in the proposed area. They are actually going to be considered tidal wetlands and also environmentally friendly to the critters there so they can enjoy and do that. So from an existing condition standpoint, that's pretty much what's out there today. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to take the old ratty industrial facility, give the, give the property some new life here and, and create a warehouse, flexible space warehouse, which is going to be proposed connections on South Pennsylvania Avenue. That is going to be the sole connection with the exception of an emergency access over on East Post Road. That'll be gated with a knockbox and locked for emergency personnel only. So basically what we would be doing here is we'd be installing some stormwater controls for the impervious coverage. We've worked with Joe and in Joe's office to get this to, to work in, in multiple scenarios where both Joe and I feel comfortable with the design. We currently have a, a slight hiccup on the N P D S permit based on closing out an existing permit. So they are literally holding our permit until that's, that's taken care of.
That was Solvay.
Solvay.
Open permit, they're closing theirs out.
Yes, that's correct.
Other than that, the N P D S permit is ready to be issued and the planning module exemption is anticipated next week, correct?
Yes, within the next two weeks. So we have no more, no more real work here to be done on the project, at least for me, no work. But that's being taken care of and after that, we, we will have all permits in hand.
Eric, why don't you talk about the, a little bit about logistics, your company, and what you're proposing here in terms of the tenant mix?
Sure. Yeah, Eric Moser Logistics Property Company. Just by way of background, we are a national industrial real estate developer headquartered out of Chicago. We operate across the country developing Class A industrial spaces. This particular warehouse, we're expecting is likely to be a single-tenant facility. It, we're designing a Class A facility, which to us means it's got current market standards for truck court sizes, forty-foot clear height. Really, the intention being to accommodate any sort of e-commerce or distribution user who's interested in the facility. Oh, and I should also mention, we are definitely achieving LEED certified, LEED, L E E D. I don't know what the acronym stands for, but if you're familiar with green buildings, that LEED is the green certification. We are definitely going to achieve LEED certified and very likely to achieve LEED Silver certification for this facility.
You mentioned that with the stormwater facility, you're gonna be collecting stormwater from various sites outside of your own. With that, did you take into consideration my comment last time with being able to control the, where the flows, the dampers, to make sure they don't get into the wetlands or the water from the retention basins?
Yes, yes. So D E P will not allow us to manually be able to close our facilities. So that's, that's a preventative measure. It was described to me as a preventative measure to not forget them closed. So in the, in the, in the event of a storm, you can't run out in the middle of a storm and try to quickly open something up. So one of the things that we did do was per D E P's requirement and as, as consideration to your comment, we did install pre-treatment filters specifically for the underground basins. So those are actually proprietary filters produced and made for this specific situation.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Gunlock, you said you didn't require any waivers, but I think there's four on Mr. Jones's letter.
He does list four waivers there, that's correct, yes. And I think he was in support of those waivers.
Well, they will be, will comply, or?
Yes, it's all will comply. There, there really is no comments in, in the letter for any further plan revisions, but certainly Joe, in his letter and his office retains the right to issue a technical memo and certainly we're agreeing to comply with any items that he may follow up with on a technical basis.
So, so you're not actually requesting these waivers? You're just going to comply with whatever's on this letter?
Mr. Roy, you wanna weigh in here?
Yeah, the waivers are still gonna be required, the ones that they have listed on the plan and in the letter. We did offer support in our letter for them, but that doesn't preclude them being required as part of the approval.
So you have to request the waivers for us to be able to make mention that you are requesting the waivers and we can either say in favor or no to them?
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, it's okay.
Yes.
So could you go through those waivers, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the waivers are referenced as four specific waivers. I'm gonna take the first three together because they're all related. It is waivers under the subdivision of land development ordinance as to the natural resource protection ratios and percentages as to floodplain soils, wetlands, and woodlands. Those would be the, the three waivers there. And we are exceeding the ratios for, for what we characterize in our waiver letter as good cause and hardship related to the fact that, number one, the site is located within the hundred-year floodplain and therefore that ratio needs to be further disturbed to redevelop the site in excess of the permitted ratio. The wetlands are being relocated, as Victor talked about, on a two-to-one basis and are exceeding the ratios in connection with the relocation of the wetlands and creating better wetlands. And finally, the woodlands that are out there to the, would this be the, the west of the site or the east of the site?
It would technically be the west of the site.
The west of the site, opposite of the Delaware River, are being removed due to requests of the township engineer to redesign less underground basins and, and more above-ground basins and channels, stormwater channels there to catch and convey the stormwater off the properties that front on Pennsylvania Avenue. And that tree disturbance there is required. We did submit documentation to the township engineer showing the nature of those trees. It's certainly not a pristine woodland out there. Many of those trees are, are dead or diseased trees already and, and they're being cleared. We're certainly protecting and preserving the trees along the Delaware and supplementing all around the site with new and additional trees. Those were three of the waivers. The, the fourth waiver deals with the recharge and that's a waiver under the Stormwater Management Ordinance for groundwater recharge. And Victor, correct me if I'm wrong, but the waiver's being requested given the proximity of the property to the Delaware River and its location within the hundred-year floodplain?
Yes, and also the environmental covenants on the property.
That is, the, the site, Mary, was subject to an act to approval and it went through the process and it was cleaned up and approved. But certain portions of the site are required to be capped and not disturbed. Is that correct, Victor?
Yes, that's correct.
So D E P mandates that you not put infiltration in those areas of the property, but rather you cap and cover those areas with building and/or parking facilities?
Yes, that's correct. D E P prohibits infiltration on the site.
Thank you for the clarification, especially since we have new members on the board.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Could you state your name for the?
Good evening, I'm Fred Warren, property owner, sixteen-ten South Pennsylvania Avenue. I, which borders, well, it's on Pennsylvania Avenue, the back of my property. It's, it's a hundred-foot, hundred-foot frontage, goes back about two-hundred-and-seventy-five foot. And back of me is this proposed project. So I'm, I'm west of the property, so there are residential, which I don't think was discussed. There are resident, there are residences west, west of this project, okay? And just for clarification, I know I heard to the south of the project, which is, it goes right to Biles Inlet, okay, where it goes around Biles Island, that has been taken, there's been, a lot of the woodlands has been taken down, okay? This was about a year ago. I think there was a, it was a, they did it and then they stopped and then they proceeded again, okay? So, but my main issue is, I'm a resident there and it's been, and I'm not one of the fly-by-night where I just moved in. This property that I own was in the family since nineteen thirty-five. I had inherited approximately two thousand and five when my family passed away. Right now, it just sits there, grass is cut and there's a couple of little storage buildings. So it's, it's a sort of a pristine property, okay? Now, here I am sitting here on South Pennsylvania Avenue and I know the, it's probably, obviously it's a done deal, but the road is gonna be a four-lane highway, okay? And they talk about truck traffic. You should see the truck traffic now and I, and here it is, we're gonna have four lanes of truck traffic coming from Tyburn Road routing around. And I understand that's the way they have to go because they can't come through Morrisville. Right now, it's terrible the way the traffic's coming through Morrisville and what have you. So I guess from a practical standpoint, what's gonna happen to me, okay? I have a, I adjourn, I got a building by probably twenty-foot off of Pennsylvania Avenue, gonna widen the road, okay? What's gonna happen? The noise and everything? Are they gonna take my property? Maybe this has been addressed, but I don't attend every meeting. Through eminent domain, they're gonna buy us out or what? I just wanna know what's gonna happen. And as far as the truck traffic and all, it's horrendous now and I don't, I just can't see maintaining that as a residential property. But that's not addressed. At least tonight, I didn't hear that addressed. I heard what's, what's to this direction, what's that direction? I didn't hear what's to the west. What's the, to the west is residence of South Pennsylvania Avenue. And I know, I'm not gonna stand up here and they're gonna cancel the deal, but I'd like to know what is gonna happen to the, to the residents. And I'm, I'm piggyback to the middle. I'm, again, frontage on South Pennsylvania Avenue, the back of me is this building. And I can see progress, 'cause I can remember, and I'm older than a lot of people in here, when, 'cause, you know, it used to be pristine, farmlands and what have you. And I can remember with Victor Chemical, it was, they had a street, it was milky white. So obviously, things are really gonna be improved, but again, I'm concerned about my property, okay? Thank you.
And understand your concern and that's some of the questions for, we can't answer the question for eminent domain and the highway, that's not for us.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, no. We can't, but they can answer some of the questions through them, but I would, your other concerns to address the supervisor's meeting is this will go there as well.
Yeah, 'cause, but is that gonna be addressed or we?
We can answer your questions. First, if you could show me on the, the map where you are so we can orient it. Is it right over here? Yep. Yeah, I think we, we spoke with you. There's not a house on there, there's an old storage shed, right? Yeah.
It's, but there's, yeah, there's storage, there's a couple of storage buildings there and that's it. There used to be a residence.
Used to be a residence, a storage. Right, nobody lives there today on the property.
It's like, it's sort of like a hangout maybe and a storage for somebody. That's it. Like, I live in York.
Yes, we, we did, we, you live where?
In York.
York, yes. We did speak last year, you and I, on the phone. So first of all, let me address your concerns. The PennDOT permit has already been issued. There is no additional right-of-way required, so none of your land is proposed to be condemned in connection with this project. So we're not touching your land, nothing's gonna happen. Whatever rights you have now to build a house on that property or to use it for industrial purposes, you certainly can do and we have no objection to that.
As far as the widening, just so I understand, you said my property's not gonna be affected. How they gonna widen South Pennsylvania Avenue? They gonna take, the widening is gonna occur on the other side, on the west side of the road?
Well, the, the PennDOT permit has already been issued for the driveway there. The nature of any widening along the driveway there is all within the right-of-way. Victor, there's no right, there's no widening proposed outside of the right-of-way, correct?
Yes, all of the improvements will be along the frontage of the property.
Good. So there's nothing, I know, nothing's gonna really, but I just, yeah. But again, it's, it's just a difficult situation for me. Even though I honestly don't live down here, but it is a residential. To sit there and I don't think anybody in this room would wanna sit on a highway where it's a four-lane highway with truck traffic going back and forth. So I guess that's all I can say. I'm just one little, one little thing to wind here, but thank you.
So for the, the plans that we see, they're, they're not widening Pennsylvania Avenue. All they're doing is improving the access driveway into their property. So it's not gonna be a four-lane highway, it's, it's gonna stay a two-lane highway. There, at least the plans that we have, there is no proposed widening of the road other than to improve the access into the property.
I was honestly under the impression that it was gonna widen Pennsylvania Avenue and make it four lanes. I stand corrected then, okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Any other public comment?
John Keel, South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Could you just speak in the microphone?
John Keel, sixteen-hundred South Pennsylvania Avenue. I live right next to Fred. Just concerned with the traffic, if it's not gonna be four lanes, but the arsenic levels back there, is that gonna be disturbed?
They're planning to, they can clarify this, but they're planning to fill on top of it. So they're not permitted to disturb it, they're gonna cap it.
Well, water.
They're gonna cap it, but they can speak more.
Sure. So there are currently environmental caps on the property. We are maintaining them and also improving them. So in all reality, um, your situation will be improved. So the... Yep.
I'm right here.
That's the covenant, right?
So how far are you coming back? Are you capping all this?
This is all gonna remain.
Okay, understood.
Please use the microphone.
Sorry. Yes, so the environmental, uh, the environmental area that he's speaking of will remain as a cap. The restrictions are also still gonna remain. The entire property will have, um, the impervious coverage, which is associated with the pavement. All of those, um, all of the stormwater runoff from this property goes into basins. Those basins are lined and they are going to filter out the, um, the, uh, stormwater before it would ever enter any of his streams and stuff, so.
You answered most of the stuff for Fred, so.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question or comments from the board? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the final land development application of LPC Morrisville LP. Address twenty-three hundred South Pennsylvania Road, Morrisville, Pennsylvania, one nine zero six seven. TMP number thirteen dash zero four seven dash one two eight, zone RD dash one. Based on the Gens Engineering and Associates letter dated April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Fire Marshal's letter dated February eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and the retinue, uh, letter dated March seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
No.
No?
No, that's their letter.
That's their letter, okay. Sorry. Um, with waivers of one ninety-one dash fifty-two point one B one A, one ninety-one dash fifty-two point one B one B, one ninety-one dash fifty-two point one B four B one, and one eighty-seven dash sixteen.
Entertain a second. Is there a second?
Second, the motion died.
Yeah. We don't have a second, so. Is there another motion that wants to be?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, um, uh, for denial of final land development for LPC Morrisville.
I'll second.
Mr. Benny, can pull the board?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Lescheck?
No.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, item number five, approval of minutes, March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Anyone have any questions, comments, or updates for the minutes, or we take them as printed?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
All favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
So move.